Okay, it's live now. It's live now.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call to order. Uh, the meeting of the Board and Trustees Committee at a whole virtual meeting, real zone, livestream on YouTube for Monday, November sixteenth at twenty twenty, let the record reflect that it is. What do you have, Mary?
Uh, six thirty, six P M.
Okay, great. Want to take the role?
Yes, Trustee Denton. I understand we're still waiting for Trustee Denton to connect. Trustee Steve.
Present.
Trustee House.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Present.
And Trustee Holmes and Ford, he would be absent this evening. Trustee Hanyard.
Present.
Okay, we have four, Mayor, at this point.
Okay, we have a quorum?
We do.
Um, great. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. For which stands. One. Under. And. Fall. And divisions. With liberties. Justice. For all.
Okay, if, um. Trustee, uh, Brown, if you can lead us in prayer tonight.
Father God, may we have a productive meeting and all come to the conclusion of what's best needed for the village of Dalton. Ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Okay, um, let the record reflect that we have a village, uh, uh, department heads on. And, um, are there any general announcements, Madam Clerk?
I do not have any, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, residents, board. Um, basically, I just want to bring awareness to the COVID situation. I think everyone should wear masks. I think you guys should follow the rules and mask up, use hand sanitizer and use your gloves. As you guys know, COVID is hitting heavily in our community and I need you guys also to get tested in the youth. I know you guys don't believe that this is real, but it is. It's very real and I need you guys to stay safe and keep each other safe and get tested as well. Um, my other concern was I want to give a special thanks to the Chicago Food Depository for feeding the residents of Dalton during our time of need. Thank you guys for showing up every weekend, uh, to help out with, um, feeding us. Thank you. Um, two comments, Mayor, um, for you was the letters that went out in the water bill. Why did you put that letter in a water bill and not the, uh, Airbnb? The notice that we passed that we agreed and you said it was a great idea to put that in with the water bills. You put another letter out talking about the food giveaway and that's really like campaigning. So you can't use village funds or village resources to send things out on your behalf. That's what your campaign fund is for. So I didn't understand, why did you do that?
My main question, Mayor, um, before you respond regarding the Airbnb quote unquote ordinance. That was just passed at the board meeting in November second as, uh, Attorney Murphy indicated, we still needed to plug that in and include the specific citations to the municipal code. And I have not gotten those yet, so it's not a final version yet, but I'll defer to you on the other issue.
Okay, when, okay, since you inserted yourself, my question is.
Yes, I did.
And that's fine. My question is, when would you have that done, Mary Kay? Cause my goal is to have that, um, act of become first of the year. So that people will know.
Absolutely. Uh, there was no disagreement among the trustees that this was, uh, something that should be passed. Unfortunately, we did, as has been done in the past, the board did it a little bit backwards in rushing the language through without the proper citations to the village code, which the village attorney needs to plug in before this can be sent out to, as a proper document that, uh, residents can reasonably rely on when they call back and say, show me in the code where it says this.
Okay, but so I guess my question is, so it will be done before the first of the new year?
Um. It certainly should, could be, but I'm waiting on the village attorney.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, uh, my question still stands as it relates to using mailers for a campaign.
Trustee, no one used the mailer for a campaign. As you just indicated, the greater food depository, um, gave food out. Are you campaigning right now?
You finish, uh, my question to you was a letter went out in the mail and it stated that the mayor gave food away. The mayor, you can't campaign using village resources, Mayor. If that's the case, you could have mailed that from your campaign fund. That's illegal. And then also you use Melly Fitness, that's a village-owned property. Once again, Mayor, village-owned properties. We cannot campaign on village-owned properties. This is for the record, it's no argument. I'm just making it clear and making you aware, just in case you did not know. You cannot do that, but you do it anyway. So I'm telling you, that's not right. I will be reporting it so that you know that where it's coming from. That's, you don't do that.
Trustee, you could, you could report whatever you want to report. There was no campaigning done on a Melly Fitness parking lot.
Okay, Mayor, that's for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, everything's for the record. Let's move on. All right, uh, Village Administrator, do you have a report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Board. Let me try to get on here. I don't know what's happening, but. Give me one moment. Okay, good evening. Um, I just wanted to, uh, briefly just give a brief summary. This past Friday was the deadline for the additional twelve thousand dollars. I did turn it in prior to the deadline. Um, so it's a total amount that's allocated of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-two cents. I will be forwarding, um, that email that I received from the county, um, saying that they are now reviewing the completed, um, the completed grant application and the other documentation that they required. I will keep everyone abreast of, uh, whether or not we get the money, how much we're getting. Um, and I'll let you know, I'm supposed to know within the next month, thirty days. So I will keep the board abreast on that. Um, and in a minute, we're going to have a presentation from the software company Civic Systems. Mike Lesch is on the phone. Um, and I think that's the next thing up on the agenda. Correct, Mayor? Is that it?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, we, can we go into that?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mike Lesch, he's on the phone. We've discussed this previously at the Finance Committee meeting, um, and I tabled it for the last meeting, so we're bringing it up now for the cow. So hopefully we will be able to bring this up for a vote on the next regular board meeting. Um, so we looked into several companies. I reached out to a few municipalities. Matthew Stacy reached out as well and we got a response from several. Uh, we looked at those, myself, Janice and Chris Mirabali. And we ended up, um, going with, looking at Civic Systems, uh, for this type of software and the things that we needed as far as accounts payable. Um, also, we were looking at bringing on a software company where residents could view their bill online. That's something that residents can't do right now. Uh, we had a lot of, uh, feedback from residents requesting that, so with this software, they will be able to do that. Uh, but I'm going to have, uh, Mike Lesch. Mike, are you on the phone? I mean.
I am, I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes. Can you please just give a brief overview of the software and, uh, what it entails and what it's able to do for the village?
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Well, thank, thank you, everybody, for, for providing me some time here tonight. Um, you know, just to give you a little bit background of, of who Civic Systems is, um, we are, we are based out of Madison, Wisconsin. Uh, we're a wholly owned subsidiary of Baker Tilly, who's a, uh, top ten, a top ten accounting firm in the nation. Um, we strictly work with municipalities, so with villages and towns and cities. Um, we have about four hundred municipal clients in the upper Midwest, uh, approximately about eighty in Illinois right now. Um, continuing to grow. Uh, we have about twelve hundred nationwide, so, uh, the software that's, that's, um, Elizabeth and Janice and Chris have, have taken a look at, they definitely put us through our paces and, and, um, asked a lot of great questions and made sure that we had everything that the, that you guys would need at the village. Um. You know, one of the things that was, was a big, um, sticking point for them was that's, um, that we could be continuously, uh, providing updates to the system. Um, and, and not being old, you know, five years down the road or whatnot. Um, that seems to be a, a big concern and, and we provide software for life for all of our, our customers. So, um, basically what that entails is that as long as you guys are paying annual support, you get every single update and upgrade going forward in the future. So that makes sure that you guys are never at a place where you guys have to pay for another upgrade or pay for an update of the system. You guys automatically get those, um, um, on a yearly basis. So, um, that is, that is one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we point out. There's updates on a quarterly basis that get sent out. So you guys continuously see updates in the system, so you guys aren't left behind, um, on older versions of software. Um, another aspect that, that Elizabeth Kennedy brought up was online, being able to, to view your bills online. So, uh, citizens can actually sign up to go paperless with their utility bills if they want to. Uh, what that entails is, is them just going onto the site, setting up a username and password. Um, being able to view their current bill, be able to see their previous bills online. Um, then they can also click on going green and, and, um, going paperless. And what that does is it enables you guys, it eliminates the need for you guys to send out those utility bills to those, those citizens or those customers. Uh, but then it also gives them electronic notification that there is, um, a bill out there and it can, it can um, send out multiple, uh, communications to them. So, you know, if they haven't paid after so long, then it just reminds them, a gentle reminder to let them know that their, their bill is due. Um, so that is, that is something that is part of our system. Um, more, more other aspects that Elizabeth and, and Janice and, and Chris brought up was, you know, departments, uh, being able to have an apartment head dashboard where they can go on and, and they can see their budget to actual, um, on a, on a real-time basis in the system. So they can see, um, you know, all, all their accounts and, and where they are budget to actual. Um, re, includes reports, includes graphs, um, that sort of thing. Um. Other aspects of it, you know, we, we have the ability, you know, in today's world, everybody wants to go a little bit more paperless, right? Uh, they don't want to be chasing down paper or, or, um, printing off and killing trees and that sort of thing and, and keeping multiple copies of things. Our system allows for paperless like A P process, so accounts payable invoices can be scanned into the system. They can be routed around for approval. Um, that way, um, the A P person can actually see exactly where that invoice is and who has an invoice and who they're waiting for approval on. Um, and it allows you to do that on a, on a quicker basis, especially during COVID times here. If people need to jump online to, um, from, from their homes or, or maybe not in the office. Um, they can, they can actually approve some of those things and get them, get them, get them through the process. Um. Same thing with a budget, budget application. Um, that is a dashboard where they can, they can actually see their, their current budget. They can view their previous year's budget. Um, you can put inline items into there. You can make attachments into the, into the budget process. Um, just makes it a lot more user-friendly and, and, uh, capable for, for, for the village. Um, within the system, I know one of the things was, you know, Elizabeth had, had brought up is the user-friendliness of the software has to be there, uh, for everybody to be able to get in, um, be able to s- get to the, get to the information that they need to be able to get to, um, in an easy way. And, um, our system is very user-friendly. We have electric, electronic steps checklist, checklist for all of the processes within the system. So, um, if you go into, let's say, accounts payable, for instance, um, you don't just go into accounts payable and not exact, know exactly where to go. Uh, we have a steps checklist off to the right-hand side of that, of the, of the program that will actually is, is modified into your exact processes. All you have to do is go down that list, click off when you've done something, and once you click on that item, it will actually take you to that point in the software. So, uh, we have found that to be very, very, uh, beneficial for new clients coming onboard. But then also for, um, our clients, when they have to have somebody else step into another role, uh, to be able to help somebody out. Uh, if they get new employees that come onboard, um, they actually have a detailed list of the items that they need to do on a day-to-day basis. Um. You know, our system has a full audit trail, um, within it, um, so it time and date stamps when things are done, who does them. Um, so that the audit, the audit side of things is, is right within the, right within that application too. Um, and, you know, another thing that, another thing that Elizabeth had brought up during the, during the, uh, demonstrations was the need for, in the, the want to have, um, additional training opportunities. And we have a, a symposium on a yearly basis, um, and we do that, um, every September. Um, we have a symposium and, and it's two days. It goes through, um, utility billing, goes through payroll. Well, you guys are with the payroll side of things, but with the financial aspects of things. Um, goes through all those applications and does in-depth, detailed training, uh, for each one of those applications. This year, unfortunately, we weren't able to do it face-to-face. We did it online, uh, through Zoom, much like you guys are doing here tonight. Um, but, um, that was very well received. We recorded all of the, all the sessions and we were providing those to all of our customers also. So, um, you know, that's, that's just a little bit about our, our product, about our system. Um, and, and I open it up to any questions or anything like that, or Elizabeth, if there's anything that you, also you want me to kind of talk about, I can definitely do that too.
Um, if you could just mention some of the municipalities that you're in, I had told the board, uh, previously, but if you could please mention those municipalities.
Yeah, definitely. So in Illinois, we have about eighty clients, um, municipal clients, and some of them that would be um, around Dalton would be, uh, Thornton Township, Homewood, um, Oak Forest, um, the Village of Thornton, yeah, along with Thornton Township. Uh, but we have a, a plethora of other, other clients too, Villa Park, um, East Moline. We have, we have a lot of them. So I don't know if you guys want anymore, but, but, uh, that gives you, uh, gives you some, some of our references in the area, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Michael. Does anybody have any questions? Would the board like to ask, uh, Mr. Lesch, any questions?
Um. Did he share the cost with us?
No, Mike, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I do. Yeah, so the, the upfront costs of the application, this includes, you know, conversion from your old system into our system, the setup, um, the training of the software. Um, and we, we, we do a lot of training within the software because we know that you can give somebody a Cadillac, but if you don't teach the person how to drive, right, it's, 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 it's useless, right? So we understand that and we put a lot of training in, into the system too. Uh, but the total upfront cost is ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And the annual fees for it are fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. Um, and that includes the accounts payable, the cash receiving, um, the general ledger applications, the department head dashboards, along with the A P workflow and the, the budget workflow capabilities, uh, utility billing, um, and that also includes, um, the online payments capabilities, the interfaces in with your electronic reads. Um, and one thing that I did not talk about was our, our ability also to do like mobile capabilities. So, um, if it isn't something you're, you're wanting to do now, that's fine, but within our service order application, so when you have to go out and you have to do, turn on and shut off some turn-ons and, or checking for leaking meters, that sort of thing, uh, we also have a mobile service orders, which allows you to be in the field and actually, um, on any type of mobile device, it allows you to basically, um, receive those service orders, complete those service orders in the field and that automatically informs the utility billing person that those service orders have been completed.
Now, those upfront costs, are they payable one time or can it be broken up?
Uh, we can definitely break those up over multiple fiscal years for you, if you'd like to. So you can, you can be, some municipalities like to pay it all upfront and some of them like to spread it over a two or three-year period, uh, at zero percent. And we're willing to discuss that with you too. So let's say it was over a three-year period, just for instance, unless you say, instead of it being, and instead of it being ninety-eight thousand, nine fifty, let's just say it's ninety-nine thousand, just for ease of math. Um, it would be thirty-three thousand dollars down, thirty-three thousand dollars, um, you know, the first month of your next fiscal year and then thirty-three thousand dollars the following fiscal year. And we can work on that.
I'm sorry, Chris, can you jump in there for me?
Yeah, um, Mayor, we've already planned how we will find that this operate, the, this cost. Because, um, in the previous year, you guys issued a capital bond, so we're going to use those capital proceeds to cover the initial outlay for this, uh, new software. So we already have the cash flow to cover this purchase.
Okay, the, uh, an additional question would be, is this a contract, uh, that, uh, has a term limit on it? Uh, is it negotiable to, um, get out of the contract if we needed to?
Yeah, so, so then upfront cost is, is for the purchase of the application, the conversion and the training. And then every year, we have an annual, annual cost for it, um, as I stated earlier. That is something that's, that's, um, basically on a year-to-year basis, you can, if you ever wanted to get out, you could. But, uh, we've been in the business for longevity and taking care of our customers, so we hope that will never be the case.
Okay, so there's no, uh, clause, or do we have to sign a contract other than, um, for starting the program? And there's no penalty if we decided to, uh, if, exclude ourselves from the contract?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
I, I got a question, may I recognize?
Good.
And, um, I guess for, this is answer question for, uh, Elizabeth and, um, Michael. Uh, the goal is this, this, this will allow us to, all of our departments to, uh, communicate with each other through, through one network? Is that, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that, along with, um, the fact that I think that this is, there's this more simple, um, software for the water department to use. Uh, the software we have now is really complicated. Um, and I think the software will be a lot easier. We're also able to keep track of receipts better. Um, it's a paperless system. Um, you can have paper, but it can do a lot of things that, um, the software we have um, is not capable of. It also leaves a fingerprint mark, so we know who entered in what. So we could, we'll be able to track things. If there's errors or something, it's easy to track. Um, because there's a print and we know everyone who entered everything in when they entered it. Um, we can also see if a paper or there's something, a permit that's outstanding that needs to be taken care of. There'll be like alerts that pop up on this person's account that will, um, come up. It'll also prevent, um, it'll cut down on errors with water shut-offs because there'll be flags that will come up for certain amounts. It'll exclude those people, um, from being shut off. If someone has some type of medical, we can put that in and that will, um, also pop up to prevent that. Um, I think a game changer is also having the online billing, uh, so residents will, will be able to view their bill. Uh, so that will cut down, down on the people who are, um, not getting their bills in the mail or their bills are getting lost or they're being sent to the wrong address. Then now there, everyone can go online. If you don't receive your bill, like he said, you can sign up for paperless. So those are a few of the things, but we have several pages of different things, um, that we requested. Uh, the software that we wanted as far as to have purchase orders on there to streamline when people need to make purchase orders. So it's, it'll streamline a lot of our, our departments and communicate a lot better.
I also want to add that one of the things of the streamlining with the purchase order system is now each department will, their clerk will handle inputting their department's invoices in, minimizing the time on finance, which in turn will minimize my time, decreasing how much you guys are paying for us to process billing and give us time to move away from processing billing. So each department will handle their own billing, inputting, decreasing our time, which in turn will decrease the fees.
Uh, one more, one more question. Does this commu, does this software communicate with, uh, uh, cell phones, like as far as sending a text message? Like, I know sometimes I have bills that will actually send me a text message and say, your bills do at this time. Does this, does this software do that?
Yeah, for the utility bills, yes, it does.
That's a, that's a, that's a big plus.
Yeah, you can pay by text also. So you can, you can, when you get that text, you just text back pay. And if you have a credit card or whatnot, whatnot set up for it, it will actually just go forward and, and make that payment.
And, and Liz, you, the other villages you talked to that have this software, they were, were they extremely satisfied with it?
Yes, and also I wanted to mention that Homewood says that they use Cassell for their water billing. Um, and they said they were using another company up until last year, but they had outgrown it. And they said, and their words were, we're liking this very much for all of our programs, including payroll, water billing, H R, general ledger, et cetera. And those are some of the, those are the things that we had outlined, that we requested, that we wanted to, uh, utilize the software for.
That's, that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Uh, will this interface with, uh, online payments?
It will, yes.
Okay.
And also, Mayor, I wanted to add, um, I know that you were interested. We were trying to, uh, do the I E P A loan and the meter change eventually, and this is compatible with that as well.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Yes. Um, couple things. Did, well, I don't know the gentleman's name. What's your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Mike, it's Mike.
Okay, Mike, are you located in, uh, Country Club Hills or Tilly Park? Do you use the software there?
No, I'm, I'm actually, I'm out of Madison, Wisconsin.
Okay, so you're not in any one of the municipalities?
Nope.
Okay, okay. Um, my next question is for Cosparex. Uh, Chris, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, um, do, do you have any experience with the software?
Some of my clients do use the software and from what I've heard from those clients, they are very happy with it.
How long have they been using it?
Um, when we first, when we first, um, started this process with Mike, they had co- recently converted within the, like, the last six to eight months and they seemed very happy. I haven't checked back with them since, but when I did ask around, they were happy with the software change.
Okay, so do we have a side-by-side comparison of the new software versus the current one we use?
Well, we don't have a side-by-side per se, but, um, the software we have now can't even do a lot of this stuff. Um, the online billing was something that they couldn't do. Um, there were issues with keeping track for, of the, uh, stickers, things like that. Um, so, and also the system didn't communicate with all of the other systems that we have running within the department. So this is definitely a game changer, especially in regards to, um, you know, having to deal with complaints about people saying they're not getting their water bills and now with ease, they can just go online and view their bill.
Also, from a standpoint of, uh, billing, the, the software we currently have for each department head to be able to input their own billing, we would have to have a license for each one. But under this software, the workflow system that they use, they don't require us to have a separate license for each department head. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike.
No, you're right.
So each department head will be able to access their own billing and, and put their own billing and, instead of having to have a new license for each person to have access to do billing.
Okay. Now, would this new software wipe out any permanent, uh, records or information that's useful for a forensic audit? Will we keep all records?
Yes, it will keep all records and, um, they'll be able to transfer everything over and that is part of the fee also.
Okay, and then how long is the training period?
Um, Mike, you might be able to better answer that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the train, training period, um, so basically, once we decide to go forward and go. Yeah, yeah, so, so the train, training period, um, so basically, once we decide to go forward and go. Forward with a, with a product, right? What we do is we sit down with. Um, when we sit down with Elizabeth and with Chris and, and, and talk about. What the best game plan is as far as an implementation timeline is goes. Um, so we take into account when you guys do your utility bills, when you do your A P process. Um, you know, when you do those, those critical. Critical, critical tasks that you guys have. And then we just, then we work within those timeframes in order to implement the software. So um, some of it will depend on exactly the dates and times when they do those, those critical processes. But in general, um, I would say that we have you guys up and going, um, you know, once we start the. Once we actually do the conversion and we start the training, we have you up and going live within a three to four week period.
Three to four week period, okay.
Once we're actually going to the live status, right? Um, that's when we're actually starting the training to the end of training.
Okay, so if we was to go with you guys, um, this software won't be up until, is it like mid? Year like May, April, May of next year?
Yeah, I'd say, you know, we, we'd be working with you to see exactly what the best timeframe would be. Um, but I'd say probably May, June of, of this next year, uh, would probably be about the timeframe. And, and we'll also talk to Elizabeth and, and Chris to see exactly when they, when, when is best for them to get going. With their processes.
Okay, um, that answers my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question, Liz. Would this change the billing dates or will we still go with the same billing dates we're utilizing now?
We can still go with the same billing dates.
Okay, and even with the process coming out, maybe May or June. We definitely will be able to let the uh, residents know a month or two ahead of time. So everybody can get used to signing in online, you know, let them know this is what's coming up. You'll be able to. See your bill online, pay your bill online and all those things like that, correct? So we can do that at least two months before if we decide to go with this company, correct?
Yes, and I'll be sure to get with uh, Ms. Nixon if the board does approve this. So that we can even maybe put some kind of inform marshal out just to let the residents know what's happening.
Absolutely.
Okay, no problem, trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Um, if the employees need additional training, is there a cost for that?
There is, there is. Um, you know, upfront, we, we definitely put enough training in, into it. We have other avenues of training that do not cost anything, right? So we have avenues of, of online, online classes that we have on our support portal and. And we do have quarterly uh, trainings for the software along with um, yearly symposium. Um, you know, tho- those types of things, but um, if you, let's say that you have a new. Person on you, on the utility billing side that needs to know the software, right? And they don't have any experience in it. You can definitely train them in-house or you can pay us. They have somebody, one of our staff train them also.
And what does that cost?
Um, it would depend on their expertise and what they have within the system. But let's say utility billing, for instance, and let's say they have no experience in utility billing. I would say that the cost to get them up and going and, and running with the software, right? Um, um, would be about twenty-four hundred dollars, two days of training.
Two days of training?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and what about um, troubleshooting or technical problems with the software?
Yeah, so the technical problems, uh, we have a support staff, right? Um, so when, once you guys go live, right off the bat, your trainer will be your go-to person, right? That will be the person that you guys, that will be your lifeblood or will be, have their, their phone number to call them directly and email and everything else. Uh, but then after that, then we have a, a transitional person. Which basically takes all of our clients and uh, all our new clients and they are the go-to person for that. Um, and they contact that person directly for any questions that they might have. And then after about a two-month period, then they go on to our, our general support. And we have a person, Amber, that was her name. She is the one that all of our support or all of our clients contact either through. Uh, phone or email, right? And she logs the call. We utilize a, a program called Zoho. Um, and Zoho um, time and date stamps, every call that gets made for all of our clients. Our clients can then go in and, and they get an email notification when, when um, a call has been logged. They can also log it themselves online. And they can go in and they can view the status of that call, um, but view the um. How, how that call was solved, along with any documentation that we put in there. And they have that for the entirety of the, of the time that you guys are on the system. So. Let's say that they have a budget question one year. And the next year they're like, oh, you know what? I, I know I asked a question about that. They can actually go on to that support portal and they can see the resolution that we did with the last, with their last call and they can answer that question themselves. Um, but support is what we hang our hat on. Uh, we know that is our lifeblood. We know that is. In order to keep clients and to keep clients happy, we have to take care of them, right? Um, and that, and that's what we do.
And uh, what about, are there any periodic uh, upgrades?
Yeah, so we have, we have updates on a quarterly basis. Um, and those updates basically provide additional functionality or, or um. Um, provide a little bit easier ease of use. Um, and we have quarterly, along with those quarterly updates, we have quarterly videos that go out with documentation. Actually giving you like three-minute snippets or forty-five minutes, second snippets of. Exactly how that change could impact you if you choose to utilize it. It's nothing that you have to go forward with. Um, a lot of them are just additional features and functionality that you can utilize if you want.
Are there uh, additional costs to upgrades?
No, no, so we have a software for life and that software for life provides you every single update and upgrade going forward in the future. So you know that as long as you guys are paying that annual support on a yearly basis, you know that you guys are getting every single update and upgrade going forward.
Okay, uh, in the future, is that annual fee uh, ever inflated or increased?
Yeah, so it can be increased um, from year to year. Um, what we do is we see uh, consumer price index, we go off the C P I, right? And, and we max that out at three percent though. So um, generally you see us at, you know, zero to one percent. Um, but we max it out at a three percent increase.
And it, does that occur every year?
Um, every year we could, right? Um, but we go by the lower of three percent or the computer, consumer price index. So if the consumer price index is at a half a percent, we either do a half a percent or zero.
Okay. Uh, you used the word we could.
Yep. We don't do it every year, so we don't, we don't do an increase on a yearly basis. We don't do, we don't always go by the computing, consumer price index like a lot of companies do. They'll just always do an increase on a yearly basis. We do not. Um, you know, and I'd even put in the contract that will do three years without an increase for sure.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Know of that, so.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Mike.
Well, thank you guys. We appreciate, I appreciate you guys' time.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor.
I see that Trustee Denton has joined us.
Yes, so noted.
Okay. All right, um, should we take a consensus vote on this? Hello?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Starting with Trustee Denton.
They've covered all the bases. It sounds very good. It's very much needed.
Okay, well, let me join the meeting here.
All right.
Trustee Denton. Trustee Denton is okay?
Yes.
Moving forward, Trustee Steve.
Yes, let's move forward.
Sorry, I'm getting feedback.
Phone off or something.
Got a delayed reaction there.
Yes.
Trustee Denton is okay? Yes. Forward, Trustee Steve.
Yes, let's move forward.
Sorry, I'm getting feedback.
Okay, I see what's going on. Hold on.
Got it delayed.
I've kicked myself off, but.
We can still hear you.
Okay, well, that works. At least we can eliminate the feedback. I have Trustee Denton in favor, Trustee Steve in favor, Trustee House.
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes is absent, Trustee Henry.
Yes.
Okay, so five trustees in favor with Trustee Holmes being absent.
Okay, great. Next thing on the agenda is that speed cameras?
Well, thank you. Um, as you guys know, I put this on the agenda due to the fact that. Chief Mobley was advocating for speed cameras in the community. Uh, he did ask me to pull this agenda item. I did do some research, so even when it do come back, um, we cannot do speed cameras due to the fact we do not have. A million people that live in our community. They, they have a law that states you have to have a million people in order to have speed cameras in your town. So that's just a little information, F Y I. So if anybody want to research it themselves, they can, but right now we're pulling it. And I believe that he told me he wants to bring it back, but that's the research I found out on it, so we cannot do it. I know we had a lot of accidents on Sibley, that's the reason for it. Uh, putting the speeding cameras on Sibley and of course it will uh. Go against people coming through our community, not necessarily our residents, but people flying down Sibley. And causing really, really bad accidents. So with that being said, I am pulling the agenda. Thank you.
Uh, that's one of the reasons I implemented the um, traffic unit. Um, because I know I researched it over a year ago and you have to have the population of a million or more. So um, the uh. A, a traffic unit has been working Sibley along with not just us for speed, but the uh, the overweight trucks that are coming through our town. So um, the uh, traffic unit is uh, is actively working on, on speed.
Okay, well, Mayor, if you could give the board a copy of what they have been doing? Cause I don't have that and I don't think no other board member has it. Account of how many tickets they're writing as it relates to the speeding. That would be grateful, then also the stop signs for people running the stop signs.
Mayor, Matt, come in.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that you come in, Chief, uh, and you have that data.
Right, I, I, I read off um, uh, data on the last uh, board meeting of all the citations that were done. Um, but if you all would like that, I could forward you all a copy um, of the monthly stats.
Yes, can we, we used to get that in the past. Every board member had it instead of someone just reading. So we could keep it in our file for what's going on in the community. So that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, next thing on agenda is tax levy. Twenty-twenty. Chris, you want to respond to this?
Okay. Um, trustees, Mayor. We have to pass, as everyone is aware, we have to pass a tax levy to. Levy taxes for next year. Today is just for discussion purposes to, for me to find out what is the board's overall intention regarding the tax levy. I do want to let the board know there are a few factors that they need to consider. The first, um. Pull F O P, lieutenants and sergeants, there was a federally arbitrated contract agreement that was not budgeted for. That related to a three-year signing of the contract. So which equated to a five percent increase in base salaries for those union members. Also, all of your union contracts will be expiring at the end of this fiscal year. Meaning that depending on how the negotiations go, we could have a large increase in payroll. Also, the village recently agreed to hire ten more police officers. Depending on the board is, the chief is going out for grants to fund those hirings, but. Those are on a reimbursement basis and those are on if the village gets those grants. That increases payroll by about over five hundred thousand dollars. The other item that we need to discuss is funding your pensions, your police and fire pension. The village has been working, kudos to the village, on funding those pensions, which is why we are improving our funding level. But the funding level we are working on right now on achieving the recommended contribution amount. Which, taking into consideration the village's collection rate, we are not at that level yet. Now, there is a decrease in your debt levy this next year. So you will be having a lower principal and interest payment, which we are reallocating to cover some of your pension increase. To cover an increase in the pension levies. Because the, the debt levy is going down, so we're reallocating those monies from the debt to your pension. But I guess the main reason I put this on there is to announce the levy and then to find out what is the board's intention. I did send everyone on the board some of the files that I have related to calculating the tax levy. I guess my question is, does anyone have any questions? How do, what would you like to know? Is there anything you would like to ask of me? I am looking to at least bring up the levy to accumulate the resources of what's the decrease in the debt levy. And I'll find a little bit better to get to the level for your pension levy to what's, is recommended by the actuaries.
And Chris, uh, while we. Um, in regards to the tax levy, we need to also address the bond issue for Homewood disposal. Uh, the renewal of that bond will not take us through February as we thought. Due to the increased number of dumpsters that we have been using. Uh, to get rid of some of the waste from uh, from trimming trees. So between now and the end of the year, we need to address that.
Which, we'll have to see how much of the most recent bond is, of those proceeds are left. And the rest, the village will probably have to fund through physical cash payments.
Okay, well, uh, it looks like we're gonna be at least a couple of months short.
Which, that's usually consistent with where we stand, so so long as. I'll, I'll look into it and see how many months we're going to be short, but you, usually the village ends the fiscal year without being. About one to two months where they actually have to make cash flow payments.
Right. Yeah, I was re- reviewing it last weekend. Looks like we're going to um, be a little bit shorter than we were in the past.
Which, what we may want to do in that situation, depending on where we stand, we may want to fund it now, a few of those payments. And then as we get closer to the end, so um, January, February, when. If God forbid, COVID comes back, we could use the, the proceeds from the bond to, to at least not have to pay Homewood. We may want to pay it now. So that way we have some cash, available cash if God forbid, COVID comes back. That's something.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's something we may want to consider for the next bill run, for like the next two bill runs to um, actually pay Homewood. Instead of using the proceeds and then for January, February, when if God forbid, COVID comes back. We don't have to make payments to Homewood and we can reserve those cash to help us get through those time periods.
Right, well, um, it looked, just my estimation, looks like we're gonna run out before the end of the year. Also, we need to uh, start thinking about the renewal of that bond. Okay, any questions? Or how you want to go forward with this, Chris?
I'm thinking that because this is the first time it was introduced, we, everyone can ask any questions of me now and then. Um, and, um, you guys can come back. If you have follow-up questions, you can here talk to me or John. And we can set up, schedule your Zoom meeting or a phone call, whichever way works for any trust, any board member. And um, then we have, I believe, um, I've already spoken with Trustee House, we can place this on the finance committee. To discuss and then we can also discuss it and hopefully for approval at the December meeting. Or if necessary, we can call a special meeting to um, pass the levy.
Okay, you, you, um, if you could look into the remainder of the funds. Um, versus our, our monthly billing. Um, and then again, check last, the next, I'm sorry, last year. Uh, and look at the difference in the increase because we have. The, uh, have increased the amount of dumpsters that we're using, which is uh, eating away at the uh, the balance of the bond. the, uh, have increased the amount of dumpsters that we're using, which is, uh, eating away at the, uh, the balance of the bond.
Of course.
Mayor, if I can be recognized?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, and, uh, Chris and I did have some, uh, discussion over the weekend about this. Um, this, today was the first that we had some hard numbers that have been presented, so I'll kind of digest those numbers, but we do have our finance committee meeting December second, which will be prior to the voting meeting. So I'll have, we'll have more elaboration on this. Uh, my initial thought was that we should I go with the same levy, but I think we've outlined a lot of the, um, the same levy from prior, prior years. We have outlined a lot of our fiscal challenges, but I think between now and the finance committee meeting, we can ta- talk about ways to do it. My concern is that, well, you know, when things are coming up, we want to make sure that uh, before implementing any kind of increases that we've looked at everything and talked to the community, so I don't want to have anything different than our prior levy without having looked at all other.
Yeah, uh, reviewing the bond, I think we need to, in some cases, take some alternative methods in regards to, uh, our disposal, um, because we've been using a lot of the, uh, the dumpsters to dispose of tree branches and things like that. I'm looking to some alternative methods, maybe, uh, splitting some of that wood and logs uh, and and providing it as, uh, firewood for, uh, some of the residency in the village. It free, free of charge, which would, uh, cut down the number of, uh, of dumpsters that we actively use.
I do want to make one note regarding the Homewood bond. Um, the way the contract is written is that whenever we get excess, whenever we get distributions of real estate taxes, we do pay the principal and interest. So it effectively decreases how much interest the village does pay because every time we get large distributions of taxes from the county, they do make a payment subsequently to Homewood, decreasing the actual interest that the village has to pay on the amount that they borrow.
Right, most of it, most of that is interest and and not principal though, correct?
Um, I got a question.
Hold on, hold on, I can get my question answered. Chris, did you hear?
All right, just, I'm sorry, mayor, um, actually, it's usually they split it between, um, principal and interest, so there's usually a small amount that gets charged to interest and a larger portion from what I've seen gets charged to principal.
Okay. Trustee Henry?
Thank you. Um, Chris, um, I want you to be clear, so residents understand you as well, because you said a lot. What are you asking the board to do? Are you asking us to increase the levy? What what are you asking us to do, to vote on?
For tonight or for the December meeting?
For the December meeting.
For December meeting, we are going to be increasing the pension levies by, uh, by a small amount to cover the, so that you guys can get to your required contribution level to fund your pensions appropriately.
Yeah, what is that amount? So you're asking us to raise taxes? Wha- what is that amount? Let's be clear, I want, I want to break it down so people understand the lingo that we're talking about. So how much are you trying to ask us to raise it by?
You are raising it by one percent of the levy. Which equates to, depending on the pro- you're looking from a property owner's, uh, tax level, I can give you that if that helps.
Yeah, but I just want to be clear to know what it is you're asking of us and why are you asking us to raise the property taxes?
I'm asking you to raise the taxes because we need to achieve appropriate funding levels for your pension and also to appropriately fund the future payroll that is going to be needed because of the increase in union contracts for payroll.
So why didn't this come up before? Why are you just bringing this to the board now? Number one, number two, why are you just not sending us a package at four forty-six I got that today? So that's my other issue. So we didn't even have time to digest what what it is you're stating here. But yeah, y'all throw it in front of us and get upset when we go against what you're saying, but we don't even know because we didn't read it. You just sent it to us. So why? We talked about all this. We supposed to get better, but y'all study doing the same thing. Chris?
Yes, I didn't know if you were finished. I didn't want to cut you off in the middle of a sentence. That's sorry. Um, I just got through all of the analysis when I sent it to you guys, so that's why you guys received it recently. I was working on trying to figure out all the numbers to give you guys answers to any of your questions. Now, the union raises, those were federally arbitrated, so there was nothing that the village had any in the sense of we had no, we, once we got that notification of the union that the agreement was set, there's nothing we can do after that. It was arbitrary and the agreement was done.
Okay, so what's the downfall if we do not raise the taxes? What happens?
We are going to.
B, what's plan B?
Plan B is we are going to have to have cost-cutting measures to cover the increases that are coming with payroll. And eventually you're going to have to subsequently down the line pass on larger increases to cover your decreases and not funding your pensions.
So why did we vote or agree to hire more officers when we knew we couldn't afford it? We can't even afford the current payroll now. Because you're trying to find money to fix all our problems and we can't afford half the stuff we have.
One, one of the things I'd like to say is that voting on hiring more police officers, we, we're only gonna do it if we can afford to do it. The approval of hiring police officers is, is, uh, is minute. But, um, if we can't afford to hire them, we don't hire them.
Right, I, no, 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 mayor, what I'm saying is that, yeah, it looks good to the public eye, but be truthful with the people. If you can't do it, don't put it up for a vote just to show or act like we doing something that we're not. We can't afford it. Here we are, now we can't even afford the payroll we currently have. Once again, we in a trick bed. Here it is, the day before, hold on, mayor. The day before it's time to vote on it because y'all need it, so it's like, okay, trustees, we need y'all to vote on it now. Okay, we gonna send it to y'all right before the board meeting. I know y'all didn't read it, but we need y'all to just vote yes. No, it don't work that way. Y'all supposed to give us stuff on Thursday so we can digest it, understand it and come up with other options. We have to learn how to. Mayor, come on, why we gotta fight every board member? Why?
Well, well, go ahead, finish, finish.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying. Go, you know, go ahead, go ahead. I said enough. I think my point was heard. I said enough, go ahead.
I got a question, may I be recognized?
Hold on, hold on, yeah. Um, he's not asking for a vote tonight. He put it out there so we can discuss it. He's not asking for a vote. And, and, and if the discussing, discussion doesn't go well and there's additional questions, it doesn't go on the agenda for a vote next time.
Okay, mayor, but my question would be, well, let me respond to you. My question would be if it don't go on the agenda for a vote the next time, how do we pay our staff, our police officer, our fireman, our people that currently work there? What's plan B is my question.
May I be recognized? I don't. From what I'm.
I think, I, I, hold on, hold on, trustee. I think Chris explained it clearly. He's just telling you what our obligations are. We have to fund police pensions and fire pensions. We have to honor the federal negotiated uh, uh, pay level. We have to do that and we need to figure out a way to do it.
Okay.
And just like he said, he said, if we need to cut back, we cut back. But that's plan B.
So, so mayor, if we knew this, Jason House, um, has a committee meeting every month. Why we haven't been discussing this? Why right now? Why we ain't been talking about this? This can't be brand new that we know we broke, we need money? We should have been discussing it.
Trustee, you've been a trustee for almost eight years. You not, this is the first time you heard about funding pensions?
Mayor, that is not what I just said to you. Stop deflecting. Listen to what I'm stating. I'm talking about, why is it right now? Y'all giving it to us right now, again. Right before board meeting when y'all knew we had this problem, we could have been discussing is what I'm stating, mayor.
It could have been discussed at the second board member in, uh, meeting in December. But he brought it up today, wh- when he, he just told you he finished, he just finished the analysis. So he put it out there so we can discuss it.
This could have happened at the finance meeting when you talk about the budget, when you talk about placing money in other areas. That's what I'm saying to you. We had two months in advance to get ahead of it. We always have to let hour of trying to figure something out and then we fall short, mayor. That's my issue.
Ahead of it. That's why it's disgusting. He brought it up today. We are, are ahead of it. And, and just as trustee House said, December second is the finance meeting for discussing.
May I be recognized?
Trustee Steve.
From, from my, what I'm hearing, this is about funding the pensions for the police board. And this has to go through commi- through, through finance committee. He's bringing up for us to talk about this. And this is not dealing with payroll of police officers. This is dealing with pensions of police officers and firefighters, so. So it's gonna go through committee. And, and then once it goes through finance committee, then we'll dissect, dissect it and then we'll bring it to, but then we're not voting on nothing tonight. This is just introducing us to it. So, and we, this is not a vote meeting, this is, this is just discussion meeting. So let, at least let it go to committee. And I know Ja- Jason said he has to digest it. He said tonight he has to digest and look through it. And let's move, let's, let's see, let's, let's look at the actual numbers. And then we can make an educated vote. We're not voting on it tonight, but it's, now we know it's on our plate.
No one said that, trustee Steve. The problem is you guys are talking about raising property taxes. So tell the residents that. They don't understand all this jargon that we're speaking of. So just be one hundred with the people is what I'm saying. Be clear. They don't understand.
You know, trustee Henry, there are some towns and villages that have a annual tax increase levy. Some of them are at three percent and four percent. So they don't have to go through this, what we're going through tonight. It's automatic. It's automatic. And those pension funds and those increases for employees, union employees that these contracts negotiated for are automatically funded.
Okay, mayor, so are you suggesting that we increase it? What are you suggesting?
I didn't, I didn't, don't put words in my mouth.
Don't put words in my mouth. You the leader, you the leader. What do you suggest that we do?
I suggest, I just suggested it. It goes to.
That we what?
It goes to the committee and the board decides whether they want to increase it or not. It's not up to me.
No, 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 but you my leader, so I'm asking you. Wha- what do you suggest, mayor? Do you feel we should raise it or not?
Wait a minute, did I hear you say I'm your leader?
You, you are right now.
Okay, then, alright, then, thank you.
For another two months, but yeah, tell me what you think, mayor. Come on.
Then thank you. Let it go to committee.
Oh, so you don't want to give a response? That's what I'm talking about with mayor leadership. When you supposed to respond and say, trustee, I think we should raise it. I think we should not. I think we should go this route. You'd never give any opinion. Cause you don't want to be held accountable for anything. I don't like that. So now you put it back on the board, but you never say what you think, mayor. What do you think, mayor?
Trustee, when I tell you what I think, then you start an argument with me. Go ahead, trustee House.
You're not telling me anything.
Right.
You just say go to committee and put it back on the board. You're not saying what the mayor think we should do is what I'm asking you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Trustee, trustee House, did you have a comment?
Uh, y- yes, mayor. One, uh, thing on there is the tax levy, we have to pass, we pass it every year. So we have to pass a tax levy. The question is, do we want to pass the same tax levy from a year ago so that the property taxes stay the same? Or are we proposing an increase? My suggestion is that we pass the same one from last year because we have not had the conversation with the residents, the community. I think today we did a good job of outlining some of the upcoming challenges, but just giving that right now today, if the board hasn't had time to digest it, neither have the residents. So my suggestion is that we go with the prior tax levy from last year. It will put us under some financial strain when we come to the budget time. But we have to make sure that starting today and moving forward, we find ways to address those, uh, shortfalls, which means on some things we may have to tighten our belt to next year. And on other things, we may find other ways. Uh, we did get the benefit of uh, the work that administrator Scott and Chris, everybody have done on the cares. And we have to look at grants and other things throughout the course of the year, but uh, come December second, I mean, the next board meeting, I strongly suggest that we do vote on a tax levy. The real question is, are we gonna vote on the one that we, the same amount from last year, or are we gonna vote on an increase?
Trustee House, what was the, uh, tax levy for last year?
I do not have that figured. Chris is probably better equipped with that number.
Do you remember? Last year's tax levy was, uh, fifteen million, three fifty-five, six oh four. Which consisted of your debt service levy of five million, twenty thousand, eight forty-one. And then your operating levies, which consist of the corporate levy, the Chicago levy, the police and fire pension of ten million, three thirty-four, seven sixty-three.
Okay, thanks.
And that was really tightening our belt. Okay, any further questions?
I do want to state one thing. If the board decides not to do any increase, I would at least recommend at the minimum any decrease from, due to the debt service decrease, it gets allocated to your pension so that you can move forward in funding your pensions properly at the minimum.
Yes, I agree with that.
Jason, did we have the same issue last year?
Um, well, we have a discussion on a tax levy every year, um, and then there's different opinions about should we increase or decrease. Um, also, there was a talk last year about an increase on loss of cost, I believe. And we did not increase that. We kept the property taxes at the same level. So I, I think this is probably the same time of year that we have similar, uh, opinions expressed by all board members.
And we could possibly do it without increasing the property taxes, but probably have to look at other ways to fund those pensions, correct?
Um, uh, ultimately, we do have to get more revenue from somewhere, whether it's taxes, grants, or another revenue source. Uh, my biggest opposition to it at this time is that we have, we haven't put it in front of the residents for, um, three months in advance, six months in advance to outline why we need it, let the residents give feedback and then also look out, look at other ways to receive funding. Uh, had we been doing this for six months and had no other alternatives, I think the community would be aware and know that we need to raise taxes and I think we would have a collective community support. Um, at this juncture, we are about two weeks before we have to pass the tax levy. And we are beginning the conversation, which I think is, um, an unfair burden on the community that we, uh, do increase.
There, whether, you know, if we say, stay at the same tax levy, the you, residents may see a property tax increase anyway from the county.
I would agree with that, but, uh, uh, you know, we, I don't, we don't vote on the county taxes. I'm, I'm only thinking about Village of Dalton, which world my vote is cast.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying that we have to make that clear also.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more conversation on this matter? Okay, next thing on agenda is citizens' address. Giovanni?
Yes, I'm here. With the list of questions that we have.
Hey, before we start, um, Giovanni, uh, resident did send an email. I did respond to it. And it was about, um, you not responding to all the questions through the chat. Can you make sure you respond to all the questions, well, ask all the questions to the board?
Thanks for bringing that up. I do ask all the questions and also the, the citizens' address, the chat box is open to the public, which means that anybody can go to the YouTube if you want to look at it and observe and watch me read question by question. You are more than welcome.
Okay, but did you see that email that the person sent about you not responding? So all I'm saying for the record, I did address it, uh, resident, so I did, um, tell her to ask all the questions. Thanks.
Okay, and for the record, I do read all the questions and if anyone wants to double check, they are more than welcome to go onto the YouTube, which is open to the public and view the chat box as I read the questions. All right, so I'll go ahead and begin. The first question we have for the night is, what does the levy mean for the residents of Dalton? If monetary, what is the anticipated amount per resident?
Are you there, Chris?
Yep. So the levy in regards to the villager, the residents of Dalton means that is what your tax, your property taxes are. Um, every year, the village passes a property tax levy, which basically is what assess, what means that they are having a tax property, they're going to need to receive property taxes in the subsequent year. Think that answered, there's hit this person's question. If that doesn't make sense, um, ask a different question and I can clarify more.
All right, the next question is, what is the status of the forensic audit?
That is posted on the village website. Um, we haven't gotten any feedback so far on it. Um, I will be reaching out to, uh, I've been focused on the CARES Act, so I did not send it to the accounting firms, but I do have a list and I will be sending that out.
Okay. The next question is, so will there be, will there be tax increases?
That is what's currently being discussed That is what's currently being discussed by the village as a whole. So that will, that decision will come in December.
Hmm, not necessarily.
Okay, there was another question about um, if village property, specifically Melanie Fitness, is allowed to be used for campaigning as Mayor Rogers did.
Mayor Rogers has not done any campaigning at the Melanie Fitness Center.
Okay. I'm just scrolling through because there's a lot of residents that just comment back and forth to one another and don't necessarily have questions. Okay, looks like that is all that we have.
Okay. That's it, Giovanni?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
Okay. Mary Kay, you want to take the roll?
Yes, that was trustee Brown motion for to adjourn, second by trustee Henry. Is that correct? Trustee Denton?
Aye.
Trustee Steve?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye, sorry, I didn't get off mute.
Uh, trustee Brown?
Aye.
And trustee Henry?
Aye.
Five ayes, ma'am.
Most secure. This means adjourn. I'm sorry, Giovanni?
You know, I've got a quick question. So it's a little bit tricky because on YouTube, it's a delay from when we speak and when the residents hear. So for example, I said there were no more questions. You all moved forward to conclude. And then after that, a few more questions came up. So ca- can we go back to citizens' address or is it the formality because the meeting's already been progressed?
You said there's, you said there's two more questions?
Uh, yes.
Mayor, uh, just doing my due diligence because the board voted to adjourn legally, we cannot take anything else under consideration. Uh, perhaps we could note those uh, comments and respond to them outside the meeting.
Okay.
Well, the appropriate person can, not to dismiss the residents, but once a meeting is adjourned, no more business may be-
Y'all can, y'all can let their questions be answered. Come on, stop being petty.
I'm being legal.
We, y'all never be legal when it's y'all's time. Just let them ask them the question. What's the problem? They don't see us, we don't meet. Let, let them talk. Let their voices be heard. What's the problem?
Since legally, we have a meeting, I can, I can copy-
Whatever. Okay, residents, they want, want to hear your voices. Whatever, do what y'all want.
Good. Is it, would it be possible, I know the meeting is adjourned, so everything is not um, for the minutes, but is it possible that the question can be asked and not be reported in the minutes as the meeting has been formally adjourned?
Well, you know, there was, when, when I asked Giovanni, was there any more questions? She said, no, there was a delay before I asked for adjournment. So um, I'm not sure of the legal ramifications, uh, madam clerk, but-
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I would just point out that this is citizens' address, not citizens' question and answer. But the board members and you are certainly free to respond individually to this, to these questions. And/or if that's not satisfactory to the residents, to, to uh, bring them up again at the, at the next legal meeting. But this board can, cannot legally take any further action as a board. Individually, uh, you are certainly free to respond, which I think possibly may be more effective in, in answering the questions.
Okay. Uh, Giovanni, can you note the questions? Get a uh, email or a, a um, some type of identification where we, we can respond to them?
Okay, I'll do that.
And, and Giovanni, if you could copy me on that as well, just to make sure we do follow up, because that's not my intent to ignore the residents. My intent is-
Definitely will.
Go by the book.
Okay, I'll copy paste them as soon as we conclude here and then send them over.
Okay. Bye-byes, most secure.
Hold up, Stephen.
This meeting's adjourned. Good night.
Good night, everyone.